All right, call to order, meeting of the Salem School Committee of October 7th, 2024. This meeting is taking place in person at 29 Highland Avenue, Room 227 in Salem. And you can also join via Zoom using the link posted in the meeting agenda. Is Member Campbell remote? Okay. All votes will be by roll call vote. Our first item is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the regular school committee agenda?
I'll second.
Under discussion, seeing none. I'll call the roll. Member Campbell? Connor off guard. Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Public comment. The Salem School Committee would like to hear from the public on issues that affect the school district and are within the scope of the committee's responsibilities. Spanish interpretation is available for anyone who needs it. The members of the school committee would like to remind the public that Salem Public Schools students regularly attend school committee meetings. We encourage all meeting participants to model respectful and productive public discourse for our young learners. Do we have any public comment online?
Just one person that wants to speak.
Okay. I think we're unmuting.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Oh, sorry. Hello, I'm sorry. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for the opportunity. Good evening Superintendent Zrych, members of the school committee and all those in attendance this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to share my comment. My name is Nahara Lopez Okoli. I grew up in Salem, left Salem, and eventually made it back to Salem. When it was time for my husband and I to start a family, I couldn't think of any other place I wanted to live other than Salem, which was close to my family and some great friends. I'm the mother of three and have used both the Salem Public Schools system as well as the Salem Academy Charter School. I am a mom to a Saks graduate who is off now living her life in New York City after grad school and a current Saks mom. I've spent most of my life working in higher ed, and nothing gives me more joy, I can tell you, than to see student successes. Although my kids ended up going to the charter school, I try to remind them about the camaraderie that we are all from the same city, and the ultimate goal is that our students succeed. It is very common for us to support Salem witches athletics whenever we see students cannon and attend games because our neighbors are Salem witches. Superintendent Zrych, this, my comment is specifically to you. I think you have been doing a great job. I know you started this job prior to the pandemic, not too long before the pandemic, and I can't wait to see Salem striving to the point that I know you were passionate about. With that being said, I want to respond to the open letter you shared. I was actually quite surprised at the tone of the letter. Perhaps I misread it, and that, you know, we always misread text messages, for example, and missed the tone, but for me, it almost felt as if you were trying to make this about a competition between two schools and not about a solution. I understand how you feel, and, excuse me, and if the charter school, and you have every right to be upset. If the charter school did not go through the proper channels, then they need to be held accountable. Going forward, I'm hoping that the tone changes for the good of the students. I'm not sure if everyone in the public is aware, but we have sports team that are joined together Salem Academy students along with Salem High students because there haven't been enough students for the team on just on one side. You know, I could have stayed with Salem Public Schools, but it wasn't working for my children. We tried other methods, you know, and eventually luckily ended up at Salem Academy, which has proven to be very successful for my children. With that being said, I just, that is my public comment, but I did want to, and I'm not an expert, but I'd like you to, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. Although there is a very, very big strain on the budget for the district, and it's hard to kind of project in the future, you know, what the offset is going to be. The first year that the students, like, let's say those 70 students go over, the district, I don't think many people know this, the district is reimbursed at 100%. And then going forward to several other years, I'm not sure what the number of years, it does drastically reduce by percentage, but I believe it's three or six years, I'm not sure, that they are reimbursed. So just because there was a lot of misconception out there, you know, on social media, I personally don't like to put anything out there like that, but I wanted to kind of bring it up to your attention. And then if the student leaves with you, if the money goes with the student, the school also, you know, doesn't have that particular cost. However, I believe, and this is just something for you guys to kind of look into, there's also a facilities reimbursement that could be, that the school could also apply for or something like that. And the facilities is to kind of offset, you know, you still have to run the bill then. So I just wanted to make that comment. Superintendent Zrych, keep doing what you're doing. I think it's wonderful. My family all graduated from Salem High, you know, and I have many successes and know many people from Salem High. I just was really sad to see the tone, especially because I see the camaraderie between many of these students and the fact that we have sports together. Thank you. I appreciate you taking the time to hear me.
Thank you. Any further public comment online? Seeing none, any public comment from the room, the chambers? All right. We'll move on. Approval of the consent agenda. This is approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting of September 16th and warrants from September 18th, September 25th, September 19th, September 26th, October 2nd, and October 3rd, and application for the New Liberty Innovation School overnight trip to Cardigan Mountain, October 28th to the 29th.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Under discussion? Seeing none. I'll call the roll. Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I want to, we want to start with some special recognitions today of two staff members who are sadly leaving us in the Salem Public Schools. One of us, one of them is here tonight, the other unfortunately could not be here. She had to cancel at the last minute, but I do want to acknowledge the one that isn't here with us because of her dedication to the Salem Public Schools. The first is Linda Richard, who has been our benefits coordinator. She retired in August 2024, although I still see her in the hallways quite a bit. They don't like to leave because she, and she's helping us a tremendous amount with the transition, but she's been with us for 22 years, working in payroll, human resources, and benefits. In her years in Salem, Linda has worked tirelessly to empower educators, working as their partner in benefits, answering their questions, connecting them to resources, ensuring that their benefits were administered to the highest standard of quality. I can attest as a new employee who benefited from Linda's knowledge. Linda arrived to the payroll team in February 2002, first as a paraprofessional and then later as a clerk. In 2008, Linda became the benefits coordinator for the Salem Public Schools, and in that capacity moved over to the city's Human Resources Department. There Linda worked closely with the HR staff at the city and school department, all the while building a deep expertise in the benefits rules, requirements, and opportunities for SPS employees. While she was at City Hall, SPS employees had full access to Linda as she was often one of the first faces to welcome new employees through onboarding. Linda continued at City Hall until 2016, when the benefits position was returned to the school department. Since then, Linda has been the in-house expert helping employees navigate their insurance and answering thousands of questions about the benefits. Over the years, Linda has built a reputation as the person who either knows will find the answer to any benefits questions. She's been a resource to the schools and all city employees, supporting benefits and HR staff in both. Her assistant provided in a timely way, and often when the employee is in a time of crisis, has been actionable, accurate, and helpful. With Linda on the job, employees did not need to worry or wonder about their benefits because Linda was always available to help. Small in stature, Linda leaves large shoes to fill as she hands over the reins. So I just want to thank Linda Richard. I know, she may be watching, I don't know, but let's give her a big round of applause. And we have a citation, Mayor?
So there is this, a city seal honoring Linda for all of her work. I'm not going to read it because it was pretty much mostly what you just, what you went through there, but just extending our gratitude for her, for her work and dedication to the district over these many, many years of service.
Okay. Thank you to Linda, and I'm sure we'll see her again, so, because she's here, so, at different times. The next person is, this is a very challenging loss, and I really don't want to, this is a hard one for me personally.
Take it off the agenda.
Yeah, I want to take this off the agenda because I haven't accepted her resignation. So Vanessa Fagundes is leaving her role as a transportation manager in the Salem Public Schools to start a new chapter in the state of Georgia. I don't know what they have over us there, but we'll let that go. Peaches, right. Vanessa began her career in Salem in 2017 as a paraprofessional at the Bowditch School. 2018, she became a family engagement facilitator at Witchcraft, and in 2020, she took on the same role at Bentley Academy Innovation School. Throughout Vanessa showed herself to be an extremely hard worker and a member of the school community who prioritized partnership with families. In 2021, Vanessa was tapped, or I don't know if it was tapped, but was, I don't know, voluntold to take on the role of transportation manager after significant transition in the transportation office and the outsourcing of the regular day transportation to an external vendor. Arriving at that inflection point for SPS transportation, Vanessa set to rebuilding transportation systems and procedures and the partnership with the community. Since then, Vanessa has created a set of strong transparent systems for everyday transportation as well as specialized transportation. She has created new ways of registering for ridership, introduced equitable procedures, expanded the number of riders, and found ways to accommodate newcomers as well as students who arrive throughout the year, and worked to eliminate waiting lists. In 2023, Vanessa took on routing for daily transportation using her knowledge of Salem and systemic approach to creating coherent bus routes that made getting to school a more efficient process. At the same time, she introduced new technologies to the department's systems, including piloting and launching a app, an app that allows families to track their students' bus, helping to create a culture of responsiveness and transparency. She partnered with schools to expand access to field trip and piloted a process for taking attendance on buses, which will help to ensure that Salem has as many riders in the buses as can be safely accommodated. In 2024, Vanessa worked with city leaders and the bus vendor to help launch a program to increase safety by adding stop-arm cameras to school buses. In all of her work, Vanessa is driven by a deep commitment to children and families and has worked tirelessly to ensure their safe passage to and from school. She's worked to strengthen our foundation by creating a high-performing culture in the transportation office. Let's hear it for Vanessa. I don't want to, I'll clap for you, Vanessa. Come on up. So Mayor, can we present this story up?
Killing us.
No, that's nice.
Can we get a quick photo here?
Where are we going?
Took this one.
With this backdrop.
Wow, that's why, Steve, well.
I'm a million of those. You just got to shake a smile.
No one told me.
One, two, three, one, two.
You guys all smiling back here?
You can always come back.
Yeah, and I just want to say, Vanessa's going to do outstanding things in her career. This is just the starting point, and we're here to support her. She, what she did in transforming that transportation department, I cannot even describe the work that she's put in. No one has done more in a shorter time to build systems that will live in perpetuity, so her legacy will be felt for a long time, and I'm grateful. Many of us on this dais are grateful for the work. When we threw her in the office, I don't think any of us expected to get the production and the, we knew she was talented, but she has far exceeded. And whatever she does, she's going to be successful, and I know all of us stand ready to support you in your next steps. We just wish you were in Massachusetts working for the Salem Public Schools.
Member Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to also extend my, my thanks to both of these remarkable employees for their contributions to the Salem Public Schools. I'm thrilled that, Superintendent, I hope this is a new practice, that we are thanking folks that are transitioning mid-year as we've had a lot of good folks that have left us for other opportunities, and that happens. In particular, I want to talk about Ms. Fagundes because I think Vanessa, you have been a tremendous asset to this committee as we've navigated really challenging and complex transportation policy-related issues that are all related and in service of our children and our families. And I do want to talk a little bit about the shoulder tap because I do think it's critically important that we acknowledge that that is a success story that we have to continue to try to replicate here in our public schools. I do remember our conversation, Steve, about this, and not to rehash the, the past, but to, I do recall the thought that we didn't have anyone in house that could lead our transportation system. Little did we know, we had a real gem in Vanessa. And if I could just talk about the care and attention that you provided to families and folks that were, I think at times really frustrated in the past with the transportation system, that level of empathy exemplifies our values as a school district, and I know that I and others sent many folks your way who you masterfully, I think, addressed their concerns. We used to annually have a September meeting where people would come here and just complain about the transportation system. That didn't happen anymore because of you. So your leadership will be felt here for certainly a very long time, and we know that you've done your part to also leave us in very good hands in developing another future leader for this transportation system. So I personally thank you for your commitment to our children, our families, and our educators. You've been a wonderful addition. Enjoy Georgia, keep in touch, and seriously, we are, we are all here to help you in your professional journey. So just a phone call away. Don't hesitate, okay, Vanessa?
Should we punish her by making her think she has to stay in this room?
What if she wants to come back? No. You can, you, you're welcome to stay. For the rest of the meeting, I feel like I don't have any other members want to, well, everything that Cruz said, thank you for all that you've done. I mean, it's, it's phenomenal. I look at other districts that have struggled with transportation at the start of the school year and what, what you've managed to put together, your team, the, the systems you put in place, and just the care and concern for the students that are, you know, that we transport to and from school every day here. It's just been phenomenal. So thank you for what you've built here, and you've put us in, in a good position going forward into the future, and we wish you all the best and everything that lies ahead for you. Thank you.
Can I, can I just, can we do number five? Just on the, I just want to touch upon the Salem Academy Charter School enrollment expansion. I appreciate the comments that were shared tonight by the public speaker. We do have a meeting on Wednesday to speak with the charter leaders and hope to have a productive dialogue about the work, you know, moving forward, and, you know, that's the spirit we hope to engage with them on Wednesday. I do want to, a lot of folks have asked about the way to provide public comment to the application that was sent to the department, and you can send, we can share this, but to the charter office at the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the Office of Charter School redesign, which is in Everett, which is where the headquarters are, and the deadline for public comment is Friday, December 13th, and comments can be shared from the school committee members, or I think there's some discussion about doing a joint letter, but also from the public, and anybody from the public can submit comments regarding the application that was sent in. We were informed that the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education is going to review applications in either January or February. I think it's more likely that it will happen in February based on the email that we received. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Mayor, but I just wanted to give that update to the public.
I don't have anything to add. Anyone else? Someone? Member Cruz?
I would just add that, you know, my aspirations for this meeting that will happen later in this week is that we will have a, a strong conversation around the collaboration between the charter and the district. I hope that, you know, our counterparts, who are, again, our neighbors and friends from a governance perspective, can really, I think, replicate the fidelity to which we as a body have operated, to processes, and I think we can share resources in that regard. We've done a lot of work as a committee to improve our practices, and I would hope that in the future, as these governance decisions come up, that, you know, that there's more collaboration and communication even to this committee from members of that board, so that we're able to, I think, really articulate what's happening even here at the school committee level with respect to, you know, folks and the decisions that they're making at the charter. So I think the tone shift will certainly occur. We do need to get past the hurdle in the open meeting law investigation, but nonetheless, the, the lines of communication are open, and I think it's the, the commitment of myself, the mayor, the superintendent, to really think about how we're serving all of our families here in Salem. So I know that to be true, and I want to assure members of the public who have been tuning in, and we've, we've heard from folks that have kids in multiple parts of the system, invested stakeholders, that they're concerned about it. So I just, I want to be clear from our perspective, we are going to work towards that tone shift, but we do need to get past, I think, the systems for communication and collaboration, which is, I'm going to be transparent in sharing, it's going to be some work that's going to be required to get to a place where there's a, a more harmonious relationship between the district and, and the charter.
Member Manning? Yep, Member Camp?
I just want to note that I think the tone from Dr. Zrych was completely appropriate to the moment, and I just want to be on record as saying that. And, and I also want to note for the public, again, I said this the last time, that, you know, parents and guardians need to make the best decisions for their children, like full stop. Our children are not social experiments. You have to do what's best for them at any given moment, and so I know that there is a lot of pride about Saks and the education and the experience that people's kids have had at, at Saks, which I think all of us respect. We all have friends whose children go to the charter. And so I just want to reiterate that it is not about that at all. It is not about other people's children's experiences. It's not about people's choices. And I do want to shed a little bit of light on why I think the tone was appropriate. In the August meeting that the board of, the Saks Board of Trustees had, which were posted recently, the board discussed the implications of petitioning the state for additional seats. That's obviously a decision that has a direct impact on us. And just to clarify that Saks is not part of Salem Public Schools. I think that's confusing for people. But in those minutes, the Saks Board acknowledged, quote, "We remain in the difficult position of being able to grow in Salem only if Salem Public Schools is having problems, creating an adversarial relationship we don't want." That came well before their vote. Like us, the Saks Board recognizes the tension inherent in the charter and public school relationship, and that tension is not created either by charter schools or district schools, but by, by the state that manages the charter program. So, and I found this upsetting, and again frustrating, and this is why I think the tone is appropriate. The Saks Board minutes also noted that while they could petition the state to add more seats next year as opposed to right now, they, quote, this is in their minutes, "After we have had more time to develop a long-term plan, the risk is that the opportunity disappears if Salem Public Schools pulls out of the bottom 10%," end quote. So in other words, the Saks Board acknowledged, A, that they didn't have a well-thought-out plan for their own expansion, B, that in order to be eligible, they might have to rush ahead regardless, and C, that the success of Salem Public Schools and Salem Public School children is bad for Salem Academy. So I want to just make that explicit as I defend Dr. Zrych's tone and the reaction, I think, that we all had in our last meeting, and again, reiterate that this is not about children's experiences or parents' choices, you know, that is not at issue. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you very much. I will also, I think, echo that, I think the tone was entirely appropriate, that the justifications for the expansion are based on achievement, and we're going to talk more about what we've been seeing in the achievement scores and our accomplishments in Salem Public Schools in a little bit this evening, but I think that those comments in the minutes reflect a recognition that there was a window of opportunity and that, I believe, based on what we're seeing in our schools, that window is, is no longer in place and that we are justified in objecting to this on, on the merits and, and making a case to the state on the merits. And then just as far as the ability to comment, you know, when the minutes are posted after the vote, it makes it impossible to recognize what was happening. There was no outreach, which was disappointing. We started this meeting tonight with the public comment period that welcomed comment from somebody that was critical on this point, and, and that was well taken. No such public comment opportunity existed before the Saks Board, which is a public board, in the manner in which they, they conducted that vote, and I think that's the expression of disappointment that we tried to extend in the open meeting law. It wasn't about the individuals, wasn't about the kids, wasn't about the educators, wasn't about any, any person. It was about the way that this was, this was carried out.
Okay. This is a good segue, whereas we talk about achievement in the Salem Public Schools. And so if we could queue up the presentation on MCAS and accountability, I have some really good news for folks beyond the fact that we did really well. I mean, much improved the system is you don't hear, have to hear from Kate or I really too much tonight, which is really good news.
Me at all.
Yeah, really. And for those of you that have been used to that show for the last few years, we have a different performer, we have different performers this night, and that's a good thing for all of you. So, but I want to give some context, and then I'll, I promise then I'll turn it over to our academics team, which really thrilled to have them here. These are folks that really know our schools well, they know our educators well, and they really looked at our performance. And I think it's always more appropriate to hear from the folks that are knee-deep in this work, and they're going to be sharing, giving you their thoughts, and as, which they, they shared with our school leaders recently about our performance. But I do want to start by first saying that I am proud of the Salem Public Schools. I'm very proud of the improvements we're making while we still have a lot of work to do, and there's no way we should be throwing parades for our achievement at this point. There's a lot of progress, and we need to celebrate the growth and improvement that this system has made, and that is on, because of the work of our students, our teachers, our school leaders, our academics team, a lot of people who are working very hard on behalf of kids throughout the system, and I think this presentation will reflect the, their tireless efforts, but we'll also point to like, folks, we got a lot to do, and, you know, this is what we're going to, we'll, we'll celebrate the successes, we'll talk about this work, but the real work happens every day in classrooms for kids across the system. So if you could go to the next slide, I do want to give just a high-level overview. I guess I don't have a clicker, right? Okay. I don't know if you have one there. That's okay. You know what? I only have the first three slides, just keep it up there. So I'll just tell you when to move forward. Just a couple things on high-level overviews and themes. At the high school level, Salem Public Schools saw extraordinary improvement, really extraordinary when you look at the rest of the state. We had double-digit gains in both achievement and growth in all content areas. That, folks, is unlike anything I've ever seen in my career, and especially in a year where the rest of the, the state was flat or declined in those areas. Our high school performance eclipsed our overall pre-pandemic performance in math, ELA, and science. That's the scaled score, which tells you about overall improvement, not just proficiency. So a real shout out to our high school, and that's not, it's Salem High is the bulk of students, but New Liberty had record performance as well, and so I really want to shout out our high school, high schools, because it is extraordinary, the improvement they've made. In grades three to eight, I think we are seeing some really significant progress in math. We saw a two-point increase in proficiency from the previous year, and since the pandemic, we've seen a 7% percentage point increase in students who scored either meets or exceeds in math. I think we're on a pretty good trajectory in math. We outperformed the, the state in terms of improvement in mathematics at three to eight, so feel good about where we are there. In science, we saw a one-point increase in percentage of students scoring meets or exceeds, not tremendous improvement, but we're seeing growth. meets or exceeds. Not tremendous improvement, but we're seeing growth. I think where we're most concerned is in, and I should also say, our growth in both math and ELA increased substantially. So that's looks, that's a measure to see, are we growing kids at a faster rate than students across the district? And we are. We had growth rates in the 50s. It's the first time in a long time that Salem Public Schools has had that growth. We've been in the 40s for a while. So while, you know, I'd love to see it closer to 60 growth, which Salem High did have. And I think Bentley had growth in the 60s in math. Is that right? We were proud of the growth. I think ELA is a concern for us. It's our overall performance remained flat. That's scaled score. But the proficiency rates declined. And the state declined as well. I think there's a lot of concern about performance in ELA statewide, and we certainly share that. And our, our data reflects the state in that area. And so I do have concerns, and our team will talk more about that around English Language Arts. Our data does suggest, too, that we're accelerating learning in grades three to eight for lower-performing students. That's why our scaled scores moved. But we're not moving enough students to grade-level proficiency. And I think that's what I hope you leave with, is that we got to get more kids to proficient. It's not, it's great that we're moving more kids out of the does-not-meet and moving more students towards proficiency, but we're not quite there. And that's our ultimate, that's the gold standard, is that kids are on grade level or higher. Around accountability, which is how the state assesses schools and ranks schools, Salem High and Horace Mann were both identified as schools of recognition. That's tremendous accomplishment. There are two of 57 schools. Two of those schools are here in the Salem Public Schools, and that's a credit to the work. And those schools have meeting established targets. All eight Salem Public Schools who do get percentile ranks, all improved their accountability score from the year before. So that means every school that had a, has a rank, New Liberty's too small, Salem Prep is too small, ECC doesn't have, doesn't take the MCAS. So for that, all eight schools saw improvement. I'm also pleased to say that Collins is no longer a school in the bottom 10th percentile. They're at the 11th percentile, which is, again, I'm not ready to throw a parade, but they are moving, and they're out of that label that comes with being in the bottom 10th percentile. I feel very confident about the direction that Collins is going. It starts with culture, and then it gets, we start looking at what's happening in classrooms. And that work is happening. I think we have the right team here of teachers and administrators, and I'm confident about their growth. What's interesting is where the bottom, I want to reiterate one of the points we made around the charter school conversation is, we are in the bottom 10% of districts per the cap, the charter formula, but we have no schools in the bottom 10% of, in the bottom 10th percentile in the state's accountability system. In fact, we only have one that's below the 20th percentile, and that's Collins right now. Every other school in Salem is 20 or above. Over the last two years, Salem has met or exceeded more accountability targets than any gateway city. Our data does reveal that we have work to do with students with disabilities. I think that's the target that we are most concerned about not meeting. I also want to call out that around our access scores, I think you can see this in a later slide, we outperformed the state, and we outperformed many of like districts in Massachusetts who have similar demographics with English language learners. It's a credit to Andre, his team, that we, we, you know, that we're seeing higher performance in students developing English, English language. And then chronic absenteeism, we ranked in the top three of 26 gateway cities. Chronic absenteeism is part of the accountability rating. Mark, if you can, or Shirley, whoever's moving the slides. I just want to show the state performance. This is what happened across the state this year. So this just gives you a context. It was, it declines almost across the board in the, in both math and ELA. Okay, I think that's significant. And it's particularly significant when you compare this to the Salem High School and New Liberty performance and how, how much, we're back to where we were pre-pandemic in the, at the high school level. So I just want you to have that context. Next slide. I just want to remind the committee about the Massachusetts accountability system. It consists of two components. One is your accountability percentile, which measures the performance of all students in a school compared to other schools in the state that serve similar grades, and is reported as a percentile from 1 to 99. Any school from 1 to 10 is considered a school in need of intervention, which Collins was last year, Witchcraft was two years ago, and now we have no schools. And that, and our highest percentile school right now is Bates at the 49th percentile. Criterion reference component targets is progress towards improvement targets. The state sets targets for a whole bunch of categories, and it's reported as a percentage of how many targets you made, you hit. And as a district, this year, we hit 71%. The average over the last two years is 62%. And that is what is the highest, higher than any gateway city right now. It does measure, the indicators that, where targets are set are for achievement, MCAS achievement, MCAS student growth, high school advance, high school completion, meaning graduation rate, dropout rate, and advanced coursework completion, which is, includes AP courses, early college courses. English learner proficiency is access scores. And then their chronic absenteeism is considered an additional indicator as well. So that's what they're used. And then you can see the chart on the bottom is where schools, how schools were categorized. And that's the range of different, depending on how many targets you met, you're given a label of limited to no progress towards target, moderate progress, substantial progress. And then you can see all the way on the left is schools of recognition, and that would be Horace Mann and Salem High School this year. Next slide. The accountability percentiles are here. Every school moved. And you can see where we were in 2022 and where we are in 2024. And so you can see the majority of schools have really moved since 2022, which is, you know, is a product of both their growth and achievement and hitting other targets that have been established. And so you can see the biggest mover, Salem High is a huge mover here. Witchcraft is a huge mover over that period of time. And Bates is a huge mover as well. Okay. Next slide. Just one of my last slide, and then, then the real show starts. Accountability reflections. 82% of schools were classified as not requiring assistance. 18% of schools were classified as requiring assistance or intervention for one or more reasons. Salem now has zero schools requiring assistance or intervention. In 2024, 15% of the schools in the state met and, or exceeded 75% more of their targets. Salem Public Schools had four schools. 50% of our schools met or exceeded their targets. Bates, Horace Mann, Saltonstall deserves a lot of credit as well. I want to call them out, and Salem High that met or exceeded more than 75% of their targets. If you hit 75% or more of your targets, that's very significant in a given year. That's sort of the gold standard is 75%. And then as a district, we met or exceeded 71% of our targets. So we were almost at that gold standard as a district. We're, we're, we were almost there. And so really proud of the work that our schools have done collectively. But I'm going to pass it over to the academics team. We're going to go a little, dive a little more into the performance data. Just want to remind you, you have a massive data packet that came with this. That's for your, you know, pleasure reading, to really dive into individual schools. A lot of that's available on the DSE website, but you can, but I want to thank Mark and his team for pulling that data together. But it compiles it for you in one place, making it easier to find all the information. So, Dr. Talbot.
Do you want to talk about the chronic absenteeism?
Oh, no, Stevie.
Oh, I'm doing chronic absenteeism. Okay, sorry. All right, I'm not done yet. So chronic absenteeism, you can see our performance from, over the last four years. And our chronic absenteeism has decreased from 34% to 19.9% over the last four years, which is a 14 percentage point decrease. The next slide I'll point you to is just a look, and this isn't going to shock anyone, but if you miss a lot of school, your performance is going to be compromised on state assessments. And you can see if, in the number of days missed in ELA and math, the number of days missed of students is on the left-hand side for each content area. And you can see, for instance, if you missed 18 plus or more days, which is being chronically absent, 89% of students did not meet standard on the assessment in ELA. And 80, same number, 89% in math as well. It's pretty significant, although I would argue that it's, I checked some of this a little bit because they look identical in ELA and math. So, so that may, just want to point that out. But, but the point is that there is obviously a connection to not being in school and how you perform on the state assessment. Now, Dr. Talbot.
Thank you. So I'm glad to be here presenting with the academics team to do our take on the MCAS data. Mark's and his team's data packet is definitely comprehensive, and we're going to add some context to that. So my team and I are going to start. I'll take presenting some big-picture data for MCAS, and particularly connecting it to the promise we made to the community via our strategic plan. And then my colleague, Sonia Lo, who's the Curriculum Instruction Assessment Director, grade six through 12, will talk about the grade 10 data. And then she'll be joined by Sarah Juw, who is our pre-K to five curriculum director. And together, they'll present the MCAS data for grades three through eight. And then Andre Fonseca, the Director of Multilingual Education, will celebrate our students' access achievement from last year. So like everything with the academics team, we're rooted in the strategic plan goals. And our team, under the leadership of Dr. Zrych and Kate Carboni, set our own goals each year until the completion of the plan, so that we have targets, reasonable targets to shoot for, for student outcomes. And that's what I'm going to be presenting on and what the next slides are about. District level, high level, MCAS results with respect to our promise to the community in our strategic plan. So this slide talks about a big-picture data from grades three through eight, composite data in both literacy and math. So what you're looking at on the left is our ELA outcomes. Our goal for this year was 32% proficient. And you can see in the box on the top left, it's red, 25% proficient is what our composite grades three through eight landed on, with a scaled score of 485. So there was little to no change there. But our growth, like Dr. Zrych, increased even though our targets or our goals are 60%. We had higher than 50% growth, which is exceptional for grades six through eight in ELA. I want to draw attention to the four-year, or sorry, the five-year progression over time. We are concerned about ELA, as Dr. Zrych said. We have the number of students who scored in proficient or advanced is decreasing, while our number of kids who are not meeting expectations increased. And those red hours are going in the wrong direction. So you'll hear my colleagues talk about our plans for ELA in grades three through eight. Math is a little bit of a different story. While we're not quite reaching the goals that we set in our strategic plan at 24% overall proficient or advanced, we can see that the scale score increased, as Dr. Zrych said, which is moving in a great direction. And our SGP also increased into the 50s, which is a testament to the hard work of our educators and the students that they serve both. You can see here that the trend is going in a great direction. The number of kiddos at proficient or advanced is going up, and the number of kiddos who are scoring in the red is decreasing. And that's exactly the direction that we want to see for student performance in math for grades three through eight. So I wanted to anchor you in where we think our target, our goal should be with respect to the strategic plan over the next three years. So you can see for the year that just ended in 23, 24, what's outlined in green in the table to the left, that's what we were aiming for. So the overall picture of composite, grades three through eight, is one way to look at things, but it's not what it feels like in the classroom. So this slide shows by grade level where students' performance came close to the goals that we set with respect to the strategic plan. And this tells a different story. We can celebrate students' performance in grades five and 10. You can see their performance is outlined in green. They are meeting the goals that we had set. And in math, you can see students' performance in grades three and four and 10. And we're going to give five an honorable mention because they were really close, are all meeting the interim goals that we've set, so that we can keep our promise to the community about improving student outcomes in math and ELA on the MCAS assessments. So science is not part of our strategic plan, but boy, do we have a lot to celebrate here in science for student outcomes. You can see that 31% of our kiddos in grades three through eight, so grade three and, excuse me, grade five and eight, were at meets expectations or exceeds expectations with a scale score of 487. You can see we're pushing more students up into the proficient or advanced range. And we also had a little bit of a creep-up of kiddos in the not meeting expectations. And that's something that we're going to pay attention to, as Dr. Zrych alluded to. We have some ideas about subgroup data. So I want to like zoom back out to ELA and math. And this is a heat map. And the purpose of this heat map, if you've printed it in color, is to see outcomes for students at grade level, but also with some special populations that we pay attention to, our multilingual learners and our students with disabilities. And so here, this is, this graph is color-coded to show how close we are to meeting our goals for the strategic plan for the end of last year. Green is we're on target, yellow is we're kind of close, and red is we have some work to do. So you can see that while the group of all students is really on track for ELA and for math across many of our grade levels, we have some work to do with our subgroups. And that weighs heavily on our educators' minds because we are an all-kids I do want to zoom out for a second, though, to talk about how Salem students performed with respect to students in the state, because these results are remarkable. So even though, as Dr. Zrych said, we're not quite ready to throw a parade, our students did perform very similarly to their peers in the state. So this chart shows that in math, students with disabilities in grades four and six and seven performed within 5% of the state for that group. Our students who are designated English learners or FELs in grade five in math performed at that same level. And overall, students in grade 10 were within five points of the state average. We have similar outcomes in ELA, where our students with disabilities in grades three and six and seven and 10, and our English learners in grades four, seven, and 10. And overall, grades four and five and 10 in all subgroups in ELA were within five points of the state average. And in science, great, students in grades five and 10, both overall and all subgroups, plus students in grade eight who are designated as English learners, scored within five percentage points of the state. So that is something to celebrate. But not as much as the next column, which talks about our students who performed at or above the state average. And you'll see more of our subgroups on this list, too. So for math, you can see in grade 10, our students with disabilities and our English learners both scored at or above the state average. In ELA, students with disabilities in grade four and five, and our English learners also in grade five, scored at or above the state average. And in science, our English learners scored above the state average in grade five. So there is a lot to celebrate for our special populations, particularly with respect to the state. But in Salem, that's not going to be good enough for us. We know that our kids deserve even more than that. So this final graph, before I sum it up and then pass it over to my colleague, shows the rate of growth between the subgroups and the other peers at the grade level. And so what you see here is that if you are in a subgroup, you are growing at a slower rate than students not in your subgroup. And we're particularly concerned with our students with disabilities, as Dr. Zrych said, and our multilingual learners. We know as educators, we can set the conditions for success for these special populations. And that is what our commitment is for next year. So before I pass it along, here are the bright spots overall with respect to how our students performed against the strategic plan goals. We have some bright spots in scoring within five percentage points of the states in ELA, grades four, five, grades four, five, 10, and math in grade 10, and science in grade five and 10. Our ELA achievement in grades five and 10, and our math achievement in grades three and four and five and 10 are bright spots in our district, for sure. And we're going to pay attention to our special populations of multilingual learners and students with disabilities, those subgroups across grade levels and content areas. Additionally, you'll hear my colleagues talk about ELA performance in grade six, as well as math performance in grade six. Dr. Zrake, should I just pass it along, or pause for a second?
Yeah, go ahead. All right. So yeah.
Great, thank you. So, next, great. So you heard Dr. Zrake talk earlier about really the banner year that the high schools had. So I'm going to talk about the grade 10 math achievement first, then I'll dig into ELA. So when we look at the combined performance of Salem High School, New Liberty, and the Prep, we see some pretty outstanding numbers as it relates to achievement and to growth. In math, in 2023, we saw a 27% rate of proficiency, whereas just this past spring, we saw 42%. That is 15 points higher for a change in proficiency, which is truly excellent. When you look at the growth, you see that the SGP is 65% in math, or 65 percentage points. That is huge, huge, huge growth, 21 points higher from the previous year. And those are the types of numbers that Dr. Zrake said we want to see. Those are indicators that gaps are closing for kids. You need to grow fast if your proficiency rates aren't there. That's how you're going to close the gaps. If you join me on the ELA slide, you'll see similar double-digit numbers in terms of changes in proficiency rates. So we see last spring, for our 2024 MCAS, 49% of students in grade 10 were proficient, with SGPs in the upper 50s, which is also what you'd like to see. Again, a double-digit growth in SGP for ELA across all three high schools. This is probably my favorite graph that I get to look at. So this represents the science achievement across all three high schools again. And so what we get to see is this really, really astronomical growth, really outstanding growth as it relates to achievement. You can see in 2023, which was the year before last, that's 21% proficient. Then you see a jump all the way to 44, which is a 23-point increase. That is huge. The reason I love this graph so much is because you can see that in 2022, you had zero students across all three schools proficient or exceeding. There was not one student. You see in 2023, 21%, and then by last spring, our students at 44%. So just to see those numbers is excellent. You can also see the numbers of students not meeting, that red bar there, drastically decreasing from 2022, where it made up the majority of students. So as a sixth through 12 director, I like to dig into the data a little bit more. And in math, at the high school level, we can see it broken out across two types of questions. So we know on MCAS, we have our selected response questions, our selected answer questions, so your sort of A, B, C, D-type questions. Then you have your constructed response questions, which typically will involve sort of a higher depth of knowledge, some construction of writing, and some sort of argumentation, for example. In the high school math MCAS, we see last year a jump in both of those question types. You can see the gap between the school and the state is just 4% for selected response, and you can see just 2% for constructed response. So that's in the dark blue bar at the top for 23, 24, and the lighter gray box at the bottom. That negative number just represents gap between the school and the state. And we can really attribute those positive results to a few different factors. One is really, in the math department, just a relentless focus on analyzing performance on the standards. You see the teams really digging in to how students are doing on items related to the particular standards, and then ensuring that kids are getting more at-bats with the ones that they need more support with. The other thing that you'll see, and I think the high school would attest to this as well, is just an increase in rigor overall that all students are exposed to through different access to materials and just an attention to the way that students are grouped in classes. In ELA, you see a more gradual increase in performance. So from 21 to 24, you can see that in those two different question types, there is a shrinking gap between the school and the state. And that's true for both selected response and for writing. And we attribute this to a few different factors. One is really, really strong implementation of an excellent, excellent, new, high-quality curriculum material in ELA. We see really effective cross-disciplinary practices in literacy, in science, social studies, and ELA. We know those are not just, literacy skills are not just ELA skills. They're skills that live in all of the content areas. And we really see, again, in CPT, just a relentless focus on making sure that students are accessing the curriculum on standards and tasks that are aligned with those standards. Like Dr. Talbot mentioned, when we look at subgroups, we also see a trend playing out that we see in three through eight as well. So what you can see here are proficiency rates by subgroup, by ELA, math, and science. When you look at this top row here for English learners, you can see that 4% of English learners are proficient in ELA, 4% of English learners are proficient in math, and 5% are proficient in science. When we look at students with disabilities, we see a slight bump in the numbers, where 20% are proficient in ELA, 10% are proficient in math, and 12% are proficient in science. And so we do see subgroup data really, just, it's an area of focus, I think, for all of our schools. And in particular, noting that grade 10 sort of is a culminating assessment for our students in Salem public schools, really paying attention to these numbers, I think matters for us. So when we think about how are the children, that has sort of been our rallying call across the district and all of the departments, we can see that SGPs in ELA and math do show accelerated growth for students and do contribute to closing gaps. Those double-digit increases in achievement in all three content areas are certainly a cause for celebration. And in terms of proficiency, you saw the numbers being fairly low for our subgroups. However, both multilingual learners and students with disabilities had SGPs up over 60 in math and ELA at grade 10. And so we do see acceleration there. For hotspots, as I mentioned before, we do know that high school MCAS is a culminating assessment for students Salem public schools experience. That's one way to think about it. And these disproportionate outcomes in achievement on the 10th grade MCAS for subgroups does point to a collective responsibility, K-12, for us to embrace really inclusive practices and accelerate learning. From an academics team perspective, thinking about the high school, we really want to see continued leveraging of CPT for data analysis. This is something that high school does very well in intentional planning, and continue providing access to course-level tasks for all students with appropriate scaffolding so we see those subgroup numbers increase in proficiency and continue to accelerate in terms of SGP. With that, I'll invite my colleague Sarah over, and I'll stand by your side for the middle school.
Absolutely. Good evening, esteemed members of the school committee. So we are thrilled to be here to dive into some elementary and middle school data with respect to our MCAS results. So starting off with ELA, we saw, as Dr. Zrake mentioned and Dr. Talbot, some vast differences in outcomes across Salem. And as my colleague Sonia just mentioned, when we talk about the ELA MCAS, we know that we are assessing more than just what happens in a middle school ELA class. Because it's cross-disciplinary, very often, as one example, you may see science passages or social studies passages as texts in the MCAS exam. So we're talking about literacy skills taught across disciplines. And in this section, we're going to examine both the change, meaning growth and decline, in ELA data in terms of students performing at meets or exceeds level on MCAS compared with the 2023 MCAS. And we are also going to zoom in on achievement gaps between student groups. And the reason we're doing that again is because those are tied to specific goals in the strategic plan. So in the strategic plan, we have goals targeted towards percentage of students meeting exceeding, and we also are paying attention to disparities where they exist between student groups. So a couple of highlights here, middle schools, both Salt and Stall and Collins, they decreased in their percent of meeting exceeding. We feel like that's an important piece of data to call out. And then four out of six elementary schools also decreased their percent of students meeting or exceeding in scaled scores. And we are going to speak about the two schools that increased and start there. So Salt and Stall is one of those two elementary schools at the K-5 level, well, three through five on MCAS, that showed growth in their ELA MCAS results. And they also happened to meet the district target on the strategic plan. So in grades three through five ELA, Salt and Stall students increased 9% from the 2023 MCAS, the percent meeting and exceeding. In grades three through five ELA, Salt and Stall average scale score has increased four points from the 2023 MCAS. In the same group, students meeting exceeding is higher, projected to be a bit higher than the state at the time of this data. And in grades three through five, the ELA percentage of Salt students not meeting expectations has decreased 5% from last year. So Salt and Stall is really an important example school for us to highlight here as one school that bucked the trend in elementary. The other school that increased their percent meeting exceeding in elementary was Witchcraft Heights. So here is their data for grades three through five. Witchcraft Heights students increased their percent meeting exceeding 2% from the 2023 MCAS, and their scaled score has increased one point, so slight gains there over 23 MCAS. Additionally, another important point that Dr. Talbot highlighted is that we saw the percentage of students meeting exceeding has steadily increased every year since 2022. Now I'm going to pass it back over to Sonia for middle school data.
Just for a second. All right, folks. So we know that ELA is a hotspot for our district right now. That's particularly true at the middle school level. So on the left, what you see is a graph of sixth through eight combined performance. So that is sixth, seventh, and eighth grade all averaged together. And you can see over the last five years, a decrease overall. When you drill down deeper and you look at it by grade level, you can see that sixth grade really pops as an area of concern. And so while we see ELA achievement in the middle school declining with fewer students meeting and exceeding, we see that number in sixth grade of students meeting decreasing from 23 to 13%, and the number of students not meeting increasing from 42 to 46%. And so when we think about the trajectory of our students as they head into seventh grade, eighth grade, high school, this becomes, I think, a particularly hotspot to pay attention to in terms of ELA performance. I was curious, from sort of historical perspective, what writing performance looked like when we look at the MCAS constructed response. And so what you're looking at here in terms of this table is the last three years of writing data from MCAS from fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, and ninth grade. So you can see it goes from 2022 at the bottom to our most recent, MCAS 2024 on that top row. And so what you can see over the last three years is that in fifth grade writing on MCAS, we see a gap shrinking between our schools and the state. So you can see it is a gap of eight points in 2022 to just 1.5 in fifth grade. You join me over on the 10th grade column, and you can also see a similar shrinking with higher rates of proficiency. So you can see in 2022, a gap of about 11 points between the schools and the state, and then that shrinking to 4.5 with a 52% proficiency. So that really stands out to me because when you look at the sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade performance in writing over time, those three years, you see gaps staying very wide in sixth grade and in eighth grade, with seventh grade being an outlier just last year. And so to us, we're really thinking about what does a pre-K through 12 writing plan look like for our district in terms of supporting students, not just through fifth grade and not just when they get to 10th grade, but in terms of the increase in complexity that middle school writing really requires, and that sets students up to be even more proficient in 10th grade.
So stay tuned because we will revisit this idea of a district-wide writing plan later in this section. Now, we are going to the second component that I had mentioned in the beginning of the section, which is looking at the disparities between subpopulations. So in this slide, you will see MCAS results in ELA for grade three specifically. What this slide is highlighting is the performance of our multilingual learners in third grade, which you can see captured in the chart on the left, as compared with their third-grade peers, which is captured on the right. And there are a few pieces here that we want to highlight because while our third-grade multilingual learners did increase in terms of percent meeting exceeding on ELA MCAS this year, if you look at the numbers, only 7% of our multilingual learners are meeting or exceeding currently in this last MCAS compared with 28% of their peers in the grade level. So that disparity is of concern to us and is something that is a focus of the work of our department. If you go on to the next slide, this has the same data as the prior slide, but calling out a couple of those pieces of disparity. So first, multilingual students increased 4% compared with 2023 in the percent of students who met or exceeded, and is still 21% lower than overall students in the grade level who met or exceeded. And the average scaled score for our multilingual learners is 15 points lower than the overall average scale score. So we have some work to do there, and we do with our students with disabilities as well, as you will see in our next slide. So here, we're highlighting the SGP growth and scaled score in the ELA MCAS exam for students with disabilities. And while we did call out our fifth graders in the beginning of our presentation as making some important growth, we also need to highlight here that those very same fifth graders, their percentage of, excuse me, their growth for students with disabilities actually went down from the prior year. So that's an important data point for us to capture. While the grade level as a whole is doing well, the students with disabilities are not, not performing as well as their peers. So how are the children learning in terms of literacy? Bright spots, again, two of our elementary schools increased their percent of students meeting exceeding. It's cause for celebration. Fifth graders over the last three years, as a whole group, have grown in the writing component on MCAS and narrowed the gap between district and the state. And as hotspots, our multilingual learners and our students with disabilities, we have work to do there as a district to ensure equity with those subgroups. We also have work to do in writing, as my colleague Sonia highlighted, and in grades six through eight, sixth grade in particular. So what are we doing about it? What are our action steps? Well, we've listed them there below for your viewing. First, we want to increase access to rich literacy experiences for students in classes through strong curriculum implementation. We are very fortunate to have partnered with the state through the GLEAM grant in our elementary levels, pre-K through five. We have excellent, high-quality instructional materials through the MyView program. We need to continue our work in implementing that curriculum with fidelity so that our students are benefiting from the experiences baked into the curricula. We also want to specifically focus and strengthen our writing by focusing our data-informed instructional meetings instructional meetings work in writing during common planning time with our educators, leveraging Hill, our partner in implementation K-5, in their visits to all the schools, and in making writing an instructional priority in grades six through eight at the middle school level. We are also, again, taking that cross-disciplinary approach because we know that the ELA-MCAS is not just a measure of ELA, but literacy across content. So emphasizing writing in science by maximizing the resource and providing PD on literacy in science specifically. All right, moving on to math. Here we go. Now we're highlighting math results in grades three through eight specifically. So first, we have cause for celebration, as Dr. Schreick highlighted and Dr. Talbot. In grades three through five in math, the students who are meeting or exceeding has increased 5% overall from the 2023 MCAS. The average scale score has increased three points from 2023. Percentage of students meeting exceeding has steadily increased every year since 2021. And the percentage of students not meeting expectations has steadily decreased every year since 2021. So you may recall those arrows in the beginning of Dr. Talbot's presentation that were both green. We're increasing meeting exceeding, decreasing not meeting, which is exactly what we want to do. Why do we think this is? Well, we attribute this to a few things. First, norming on high-quality math instruction with instructional leaders is work that we did last year and are continuing to do and calibrate this year. Our district common assessment ensured access to a full, high-quality instructional materials curriculum by ensuring pacing. So these are benchmark exams that students take when they complete units of the high-quality instructional material. And that way, we assess periodically throughout the year rather than waiting until an exam like MCAS to see how far we've gotten. And five out of six elementary schools increased their percent of students meeting and exceeding and decreased their percent of students not meeting expectations on MCAS, which is, again, cause for celebration. And next year, we feel confident we'll see six out of six. Back over to Sonia for middle school.
Thanks, Sada. So as you may recall, probably around this time last year, Collins Middle School was identified as a school in need of targeted assistance from the state due to their math performance. So that kicked off a wide-ranging conversation around math that, as you can see from overall data, had positive results in our district. And there is a cause for celebration here for Collins Middle School as well. So while the number of students not, or, excuse me, while the number of students meeting or exceeding at Collins Middle School stayed the same, what we do see is that the students not meeting did decrease by 8%. And so that means those students at the bottom who are in the red in 2023, you can see that bar has shrunk now on the 2024 graph there. And so we do see also an SGP of 50, which is pretty good, average growth. And we can attribute those positive results to, like Sada mentioned, norming on high-quality math instruction, some really excellent, high-quality math professional development, which didn't take place until about October, November. So in terms of a turnaround time on that investment, solid. We do have, of course, room to grow. 17% is not any higher in terms of proficiency than it was the previous year, and yet we did see movement in a positive direction with students who were not meeting. Another positive result could be attributed to really much stronger pacing. We saw students accessing more of the curriculum and accessing more standards than they had previously. So I think that is a testament to much of the DII work, the data-informed instruction work, that we've been doing across our district and that lived at Collins Middle School last year as well.
All right, back to elementary. Here we go. So again, we are now going to dive into the subgroup data. And as we saw with our ELA-MCAS results, we see a similar pattern with our math results in terms of the performance of our multilingual learners compared with all of our students in grades three through five. So as you see in the column on the left, we have the performance of our multilingual learners in grades three through five in math, which is 9% meeting exceeding. Like ELA, that number did increase from last year. And on the right, you see our percentage of students overall who are meeting exceeding. Unlike ELA, our overall students also did increase, and you see the gap between these two student populations is significant. So if we look at the data more closely, we see that while our multilingual learners have increased 3% in meeting exceeding, we are still 21% lower than our general population in those grade levels. And the average scale score, excuse me, is 15 points lower than the average scale score for the general population in three through five. Again, looking at students with disabilities, and again, highlighting our fifth graders who we know are doing well overall, and the gap in SGP, the decrease we saw for fifth grade in the students with disabilities category specifically, is a cause for concern for us. So we're going to continue to lean in and support our students with disabilities so that they can make the same rate of growth as all of their peers. Okay. So to summarize, how are the children in math? Our bright spots, our overall growth in grades three through five, and improvements in grades six through eight. And students with disabilities in sixth grade outperformed their peers in terms of SGP, which is something we need to highlight as well. In terms of hotspots, again, we see the same pattern, our multilingual learners and students with disabilities. And it's important to note that while we are making strong growth, our proficiency overall is still less than 35%, and we have not yet bounced back to pre-pandemic levels. So that is the work that is before us as a team and as a district. So some of the action steps that are already in motion is a focus on instruction on academic discourse in math through math language routines. We know that discourse helps students internalize their learning, process their learning, and have better results regardless of discipline. We also want to prioritize Math Core Action 3 in our walkthrough tool, which looks at student ownership district-wide. So that tool allows us to see how much are students driving their own learning? How much are they talking about their learning? How much do we see evidence of them doing the majority of the thinking in any class period? And we are providing 20 hours of math PD differentiated by grade span this year, which is a plan that was developed last year that we are continuing on with this year, specifically focusing on elementary. All right, folks, now we're on to science. Here we go. Science results in grades three through eight. All right, district-wide science results. On the left, you see fifth grade, and on the right, you see eighth grade. And the good news is that we saw gains in both of those grade spans on the MCAS. 3% in fifth grade and 2% increase in meeting exceedings. To name some other highlights, in grade five, our students meeting exceeding increased 3% and two scaled score points. And the percentage of students meeting exceeding has, again, steadily increased since 2022, and not meeting has decreased steadily since 2022. In grade 10, huge gains, as you saw highlighted by my colleague Sonia earlier. That, our students meeting exceeding has increased 19% from 2023 MCAS, that's astronomical growth, and a growth of 11 scaled score points. It's worth calling out again that the students meeting or exceeding in 2022 was 0%, 0%, and we have grown significantly leaps and bounds since then. And the percentage of students not meeting expectations in grade 10 science has decreased as well every year by leaps and bounds since 2022. Moving right along, again, we are going to highlight our multilingual learners as compared with all students in the grade level. And as you can see here, again, our multilingual learners are at a much smaller percentage of meeting exceeding compared with all students in grade five who have a 36% of meeting exceeding. So we see that in grade five, multilingual learners decreased 1% and are 30% lower in overall meeting exceeding, and the average scaled score is 20 points lower than their peers in grade five. For students with disabilities, let's take a look at that fifth grade. We have, again, a decrease in scaled score from the previous year. So fifth grade is a grade level that we are paying attention to, and they are also, that student group is now our sixth graders, which we are also paying close attention to. So how are the children in science? We have bright spots in growth in grades five through eight, five and eight, excuse me, a decrease in students not meeting expectations in grade five. And our hotspot, grade eight, we have fairly low proficiency at 24%, and again, disproportionality with students with disabilities in grade eight, and also as we saw in grade five. So our action steps are to support implementation of our new K-5 science curriculum, which is the Amplify curriculum supported by the Read Trust, and deepen implementation in six to eight. We want to continue to closely align real-world science experiences with classroom learning. We want to support our science instructional coaches in developing content area literacy practices to support teachers in reading complex science texts and support student writing and argumentation with evidence in science. We want to build off Amplify's writing professional development at the middle school levels, which is already underway, and launch a cross-disciplinary approach to inquiry in K, which, again, is already underway in partnership with social studies. I'm now going to pass it to my colleague, Andre, to talk to us about access.
Thank you so much. So I'm excited to close out our presentation today by sharing out with your access data from February 2024. And today, we're going to see some exciting results that would not have been possible without the daily commitment of our educators and administrators, as well as the incredibly hard work of our students and families. So first things first, I want to share out the highlight, which is that the Salem Public Schools is outperforming the state. And not only are we outperforming the state, we're outperforming many neighboring districts that have similar demographics to Salem. The state average, which you can see on this chart, is 37% of multilingual learners across the state meeting their access targets. And here in Salem, 43% of our students are meeting their access targets, meaning that we're outperforming the state by six percentage points. This graph, of course, is showing us all of our multilingual learners who have taken access at least one time before. So taking access at least one time before is necessary to get a proficiency target. That's why you'll see this is grades one through 12. Our kindergarten students are not representative of this data because they took access for the first time in 2024, and they didn't have a proficiency target back in 2024. And as you can see in this next slide, on the first picture on the left, while the state as a whole dropped on access this past season, we held steady at 43% of students meeting their proficiency targets. And on the right, you can see that it's really our students in grades K to five that are doing best in terms of meeting targets, with approximately half or more than half of our students meeting targets at grades K to five in most of our elementary schools. That means that our big area of focus this year is supporting our older learners from grades six through 12, where our data shows that these students are not meeting their access targets at nearly the rate of our younger learners. I want to take a moment also to talk about some of our students' performance on each of the domains of access. So there are four language domains in access that you may be familiar with. There are reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And listening is the domain that all students across all grade levels and all schools consistently perform the best on. And there are several reasons for this. We know that receptive language, especially speaking, sorry, especially listening, develops faster than the other domains. But at the same time, it raises a question for us as educators about our students. And that question is, are we asking our students to sit and to listen too much rather than to actively engage in academic conversations? That concern is especially salient for us because we know that the speaking domain, on the other hand, is the domain that nearly every grade level and every school across our district consistently performs the lowest in. So again, we ask, are we giving our students enough time in the classroom to engage in academic discussions in every content area, in every classroom, in every school? To recap, we're currently outperforming the state by 6%, as we've said, as well as many of our neighboring districts with similar demographics. Four of our schools that serve students in grades K to five are already reaching that goal of 55% or more students reaching their access targets in grades K to five. And those schools are Bates, Horace Mann, Saltonstall, and Bentley. And an interesting fact, this past year, our second-grade students outperformed all other grade levels, with 71% of our second graders meeting their proficiency targets. So this slide here captures everything that we've covered about access so far. We've outperformed the state, as we've said. Our K-5 students are above our strategic plan goal. Our second graders are outperforming our other grades. And of course, we know that our listening domain is our highest domain. Our hotspots, or areas that we're paying close attention to this year, are helping improve outcomes for our older learners, those students in grades six through 12 on access. We also want to support our students in growing their speaking domain by giving them plenty of opportunities to engage in sustained academic discussion in every single classroom and every single content area across our schools. You can also see our action steps on this slide. We are piloting a new assessment at Salem High School called the WEDA Model Online, which will help us gather more accurate data on our high school multilingual learners. And we also recognize that growth on the access exam is not enough, as has been mentioned earlier in this presentation. To help our multilingual learners in all content areas this year on measures such as the MCAS, we're doing SEI walkthroughs five times a year in all of our district schools. These SEI walkthroughs seek to ensure that strong practices are in place for providing access points to our students in amplifying the language opportunities that are present to them in every content area classroom across every school. And today, we've just finished completing the final round of our first SEI walkthroughs, observing a total of 90 classrooms during three different days. All right? And that is it, and I'll leave this for questions for the team.
Are you done? Okay. Thank you for that very thorough presentation, and I will open it up to members that may have questions. Member Campbell, let me know if you want to, speaker, ask a question as well remotely. Number Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. I first and foremost wanted to thank the superintendent, Kate, the team here, our educators for the tremendous, I think, efforts that led to the results that we saw in growth and the relentless focus on equity to highlight the work that we've done with our subgroups. Super important. So just really pleased to see that the strategic investments that we've made as a district in our staffing, in our curriculum, our professional development, we're starting to pay some dividends for our kids. And it was really just impactful to hear, I think, the data story and still the ever-present understanding and acknowledgement of the work that we must continue to do to elevate all students. And so I think the one thing that I just wanted to name is I was hearing you all talk about the data. I just want to point to that group of ML students, the grade two, 71%. That is phenomenal, and I hope that that is something that we continue to learn from the strategies, the investments we've made in early ed. I think the investments that we've made in the PD curriculum have really, I think, made a difference for a lot of these students. And 71% of students meeting that target is just phenomenal, and you don't see that in a lot of districts across the Commonwealth. Forget comparing ourselves to gateway cities. So that really does deserve applause and a lot of credit to the team for digging in. I think the one, you know, piece that I'm curious about, and I don't know if this is a Dr. Talbot question or a Dr. Carbone question, I'm thinking about, you know, the targets that have been set by Bessie with respect to the graduation requirement 2026. You know, they're raising the standard. It looked like, from what I could see on some of this data, that we're getting close to that new ELA math score for the class of 2026. And then obviously, when I was hearing folks talk about, you know, the fifth graders, I was thinking about the class of 2031, which is going to have to score 15 points higher. I was thinking about the class of 2031, which is going to have to score 15 points higher on the MCAS. So, it seems like we're trending in the right direction with the amount of growth that we're experiencing, but I just want to check my understanding that you're all seeing that that class of 2026 is, in fact, on track for that new graduation requirement, and then that you really find that fifth grade, the work that we're doing in our K through five to be promising to get to that new 500 score. So, I'm seeing the nodding heads, but I just wanted to confirm that I had that right.
I mean, I can get you the data on what percentage of that class, the 2026 class, met the, you know, met the new graduation rate. The state, I know at the state level, it was four percentage points less in the percentage of kids who met the grad, with the change. I would anticipate, actually, in Salem, because of how strong we did at the high school level, that it actually isn't quite that significant and that we may have more kids who are, have already met the grad requirement based on the performance. But I can get you that number for Salem in particular.
That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, and to your point, I think it's interesting that grade two class is the first class that came through with the pre-K expansion. So, I'm really, I'm very interested in seeing that class, who will take the MCAS for the first time next year, to see how they perform. Not this school year, but next school year, they'll be third graders. And that's the group that had that, you know, many of the kids went to pre-K with us. So, can't wait to see.
Can I expand on that with a question? So, are we able to disaggregate, like, those students' data versus other students' data or similarly at the middle school level, students from the pilot program relative to all the students in middle school?
Yep.
That might be instructive because we're focusing on some of these different approaches to learning and...
We can also look at the STAR data that we have for the grade two students that were in our pre-Ks versus the ones that weren't in our pre-Ks, yeah.
Other members? Member Manning?
Yeah, I want to thank you also for the work, obviously, that you put in all year, but also for the presentation tonight. It was better than listening to these two just going on. But, um, I...
It's not a high standard, Ms. Manning.
What did he say? It's not a high standard. It's a double entendre.
But I am struggling because I'm sitting here the whole time thinking, the progress is so good to see and the effort and the work is so good and the focus on instructional practice based on, you know, data and on, you know, professional development that's organized across the system and all the good things that have been put in place and are going on. And yet, we're sort of celebrating because it means that in like 12 years, somebody's going to pass the MCAS and as opposed to the good things that are going on now and that I, you know, I mean, I'm not a fan, you know, and I'm, so I'm just trying to look at this as good work that's happening and it's continuing. And, you know, I just think it would be good to look at it sometimes without the lens of, will the class of 20-whatever pass in whatever with, you know, it's, it's good in its own right, you know? The work that you do and the learning that the kids are doing just deserves to be looked at and celebrated in its own right. That said, I had just two questions. One, just the math, the math professional development that you mentioned in the elementary grades, I'm just wondering, like, how far along is that for the elementaries? And then, when, is that something that will then continue up to the middle and high school or maybe just a little bit more on that?
Sure. So, we, thank you for the question. We committed last year to our educators and our students to provide 20 hours of differentiated by grade level professional development in math for our educators to impact student outcomes. And so, all of that professional development has already been, is already in progress. So, the high school is contracting with Peter Coe, who is helping them really, like, dig into grade level tasks and examine their curriculum for those things. Our middle grades are continuing their work with TNTP and Katie Garner to look at math-language routines and tasks that are related to math standards. And our elementary teachers are focusing on examining their curriculum, elevating opportunities for the math-language routines. We're using half-days and our full-day PD for that. And then, also, the schools that have more release time are using it for that work, too.
Okay. So, I misunderstood that the elementary was, had just started and was then a program of, you know, or an approach that was going to work its way up, but the changes made in the middle school math a couple of years ago are already in place and going.
Yep, all our kids matter.
Same at the high school, so, okay.
Yep, and I also forgot to mention, thank you to my colleague, that we are offering, like the science of reading for so many of our educators, we have an advanced mathematical strategies class for our elementary educators. It's a two-credit graduate class through Salem State, throughout Westfield State.
Okay, thank you. And then, if I may add one other question, and it's a little bit off this, but it's connected in my head, maybe scary, but is there any, has the committee that's looking at bringing the dual-language program up to the middle school, has that work started?
Yes.
Can you just give a real quick, maybe this isn't the time, but it seems like it fits a little bit?
We can give a quick recap on the work that we've done and a big shout out and thank you to Beth Ann Cornell for joining us on a couple of those sessions and Doctors Reich and Kate Carbone as well. So, we did have two sessions the previous week with a program called La Siembra, where we partnered with MABE, who came and they helped us come together with the principal of the Collins Middle School, Gavin Softick, the academics team, teachers from Collins Middle School, Liz Rogers from the Bentley Academy. And we came together to discuss what it would look like to transition all the learning that's happening at the Bentley Academy Innovation School and start to create a pipeline so that this learning can extend to the middle school level. We currently are two years out. So, we, after doing the La Siembra, we're going to continue a task force that we began last year. We're going to be meeting, discussing potential curriculum, potential areas where we can have both Spanish language arts and also another partner, content that is taught in Spanish. And so, those are the areas that we're looking at, and decisions are going to be made around curriculum this year. At the beginning of next year, we are going to fill out an official proposal to DESI that we will submit. Before we submit that proposal, we will definitely show it to all of you school committee members to look for your approval on it. We'll also be sharing it with our Alpac families to make sure that they approve and our community partners as well.
Okay. Could you just sort of keep me updated on that?
Yeah, I'll be happy to.
And is submitting it to DESI a requirement?
It is. Every time that you create a new dual-language program, even though this one seems like it's just an extension, it is because it's at a new school and new grade levels. It's a new dual-language program.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Member Cruz.
I just wanted to make sure that for the members of the public listening in that might not be familiar with a term that Andre had mentioned. MABE is the Multi-State Association for Bilingual Education, and they provide technical assistance to districts that are looking to scale up and create dual-language and bilingual education. And they also offer professional development for educators, just so if folks were wondering, you know, what is a MABE? They are, they have the IT organization for us to go to with respect to supports for our dual-language program.
Any other questions? So, I have one last question and then a comment. The disproportionality for students with disabilities, is that, is that being seen throughout the state? I mean, it's not unique just to Salem or is it a different scope here?
No, we're seeing that throughout the state. And in fact, earlier at the beginning of the presentation, you can see how well that particular special population in Salem is doing compared with their peers in the state. So, it is something that we're seeing statewide, and it matters to us here in Salem. So, we're going to pay some extra attention to that group as well.
Great, thanks. So, if there aren't any other questions, I just want to say thank you for being here, for putting together this really comprehensive and important data. There's a lot to celebrate, as you said, but also a lot of work still to be done. I want to give a big shout out to the educators who helped our kids get to this point, to the administrative staff and school building leaders who helped make it possible, and then especially to our learners, to the students and the kids who are, I know, working hard at every grade level to succeed in their coursework, but also in their daily lives, and that this data is important. And I think it's encouraging results and more, more work to be done. Thank you. I think we're still on the superintendent's update, but we'll pause for a moment to let you guys escape.
Run quick. I think just the, thank you to the team for presenting. The only item that is still on my report is MSBA update. I don't know if Beth Ann was going to share...
She left just in time.
Yeah, she just...
When we come back to that?
Well, I can just jump in, though, quickly. Go ahead.
Can I just, before, maybe this will give Beth Ann some time to get back here, but on the other item that's on the agenda, the enrollment piece, Superintendent, can you just walk us through, I guess this is the first time as a district we've had an objection to a charter enrollment. I've seen how this has worked with private operators that have tried to come in to gateway cities, and I've had that experience, but I guess I'm just curious from a strategic standpoint, like, how much our objection as a district will weigh on DESI and what you've seen in your experience, both in Holyoke and Wakefield, about this process? If you could just lay that out for us, because I do think in advance of our conversation Wednesday, I would just want to understand the merits, the likelihood of success of our, I think, collective efforts here to object to the application.
It's tough to say, Mr. Cruz, because a lot of it depends on who's on the board of elementary and secondary education, their board. I mean, the shift, I mean, it's hard for me to say what the appetite is for charter schools in general. There was a time, right, in the state where, you know, pre the question on the charter, lifting the charter cap, where it was more likely that charter applications would be granted, expansion efforts. Now, I'm less certain of that. The board configuration has shifted a little bit with a new administration. So, I don't really know where they stand, although the views on charters are a little more mixed. And I do believe that the board will look at, sort, will treat each application uniquely depending on what the need is in every community. I think the context, I want to believe, does matter, how we perform, how we're performing relative to the charter, what the demand is in the community. I've heard that more recently, the board cares a lot about community engagement and input leading up to the application. And what I, that's what I was recently told, that they care deeply about whether the engagement has demonstrated that the public wants to see more charter seats, and there's high demand for those and that that will be considered. But again, I'm just speculating on that, and so it's hard to know. There has been some turnover on that board in the last year, year and a half, as there's been new appointments from the Healy Administration. So, we'll see. But I do think public comments, the perspective of the school committee, the perspective of other members of the community will matter in this, and I think we have until December, mid-December to send in our comments. So, we should be thinking about what those, what those might be. I think we've heard, you've seen some in my letter, the mayor's made some points, I know members of the committee have shared their thoughts. So, but I do think those will, I do think they care about what members of the community have to say.
Thank you. So, we were waiting for your return, Member Cornell, on the MSBA status of the school building project.
On September 24th, three representatives from Salem Public Schools, so that would, that's me, the mayor's designee, Anna Friedman, who is the finance director, the city finance director, is that her title? And the superintendent's designee, Lisa Golden, who has really been organizing this entire project. We sat in on the MSBA designer application review process. So, we reviewed eight applications and determined a short list of four firms for interviews, which is actually pretty good. Usually, they're around three. A lot of committee members only wanted to review two. Anna was instrumental in really pushing for four. And so, we have four firms that we'll be interviewing tomorrow morning at 8:30. It's HMFH Architects, Perkins &amp; Will Architects, SMMA Architects, and William Ron Associates with another firm called Arrow Street. It was great, the MSBA accepted the design, our design subcommittee's interview questions, so they're just taking wholesale because we have a really extraordinary committee. I was asking, you know, if it was normal that a district would have this many designers, architects, project managers on a subcommittee? And the answer was no. Our project manager was like, we never see this. So, it was great. They had a lot of really valuable insight for Anna and Lisa and I. So, tomorrow morning, it will be Anna, again, Anna Friedman, myself, and Superintendent Reich, and we'll be interviewing those four firms and voting tomorrow to, along with the rest of the 20 MSBA designers on which firm we're selecting.
Member Cruz.
I just, and thank you so much, Member Cornell, for your work on this particular project. We know how much goes into building a new school, and I know that it's a lot of meetings, so I want to thank you for that. I guess the question that I would have of the four finalists for the interviews tomorrow and reaching a decision, I guess my concern is around supplier diversity. Is there supplier diversity in this pool? Any women-owned, minority-owned, veteran-owned businesses? I know that's a big priority for the administration, but just would like to, you know, hear if there's any firms that might...
Yep. HMFH is a women-owned firm, and to be honest, they came in last in voting. So, there was some suggestion that we might drop them off, out of the interview process. But Anna Friedman and I both voted for HMFH, and so that sort of led, pushed them over the edge to say, okay, if two members of the district want this firm. But overall, I find representation disappointing and lacking.
Thank you, Member Cornell, for just explaining that. I do think, you know, obviously, this is the state's process, and here in Salem, we have a commitment to supplier diversity and to engaging. So, I appreciate the advocacy that you and Anna Friedman have done in that regard, and certainly want to thank the mayor for, I think, empowering his team to make that push. And, you know, I don't know to what end we, as a committee, can provide any support to that push for you to include them as finalists, but then also, if that's where your leanings are, just, I think, feel free to tap into us, as I do think that that aligns with our values of ensuring that, again, equity of access, that when our students are hearing the story about how this school was built, that our school community was loud and clear, that we wanted to also make sure the architectural firm was aligned with Salem's values of being an inclusive community as well.
I should also add that two of the firms, and I believe it's HMFH and William Ron Associates with Arrow Street, have Spanish-speaking public liaisons, which we, Lisa and Anna and I reiterated over and over again how important public engagement with our ML population is. And so, and, you know, we said, you know, this is not a talking point for Salem, this is part of our values, so we do need, you know, I think the rest of the designer committee, which are those sort of external MSBA people, again, I think there are about 20 of them, I think they actually specifically asked us, how important is that? And we all said, extremely. So, you know, hopefully, those people don't quit because there's one of them for each firm, but...
Yep. Member Cruz.
Dare I ask, the composition of this group of folks that are helping you make this decision?
Sure.
Are there bilingual folks on it? Are there people of color, women?
The entire committee is white, except for one member.
That is a state committee, I should point out.
That is a state.
It's the MSBA's committee.
That's right.
Understood.
Our committee is quite diverse. We have Spanish speakers, we have, you know, diversity of culture, of language, race and ethnicity, and, you know, representation. So, I feel very confident and proud of our end of this. We have great representation. The state, perhaps with your other hat, you might note, is not representative of anyone.
Well, thank you for enlightening me and indulging those questions. And Mayor, Superintendent, members of the committee, I want to thank you for making sure that our portion was representative of our values. Clearly, some work to do on the state front, so thank you.
Member Manning?
Is it 20 white men or just the women in charge?
It is, it is a...
Predominantly?
No. The designers are predominantly male. And so, the makeup of the committee is about... And so the makeup of the committee is about, sort of, 50/50, binary gendered. But a lot of, it was, it seems obvious that the, many of the women are not designers, they're lawyers and MSBA staff. So that part, I think they, it ostensibly looks like they're making some effort at gender equity, but not, yeah, they're not all designers. So their input's a little bit different.
Yeah. And this is not the only contract or subcontract that will be issued for this project as it moves forward. We are working, part of our, the city's equity audit identified a need for improvements in our procurement processes around improving access for minority-owned businesses to city contracts. So as we put those practices into place in our purchasing department, that will come into play, I think, hopefully for future procurements related to the project.
And I'll make one other note, because we did note this specifically to the rest of the committee as well, is that one of the, one of the firms has a direct connection to the city of Salem. So one of the designers is from Salem, his children went to Salem Public Schools. So there is that, sort of Salem representation in our, in the applicants.
Remind me about when the contracts are awarded, are we looking at a percentage of, like, Salem residents to be employed as part of those, part of those contracts?
I don't think we can.
I don't, I don't know that we are, if we're allowed to. We can find out unless you know--
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Nope.
Thank you. Thanks. Any other finance or operations?
I just have two quick announcements. Next week is National School Lunch Week, so you should have all received invitations as local Salem celebrities to come and help us celebrate at lunchtime. So if you have not received your invitation to come and help serve lunch on, I believe it's the 16th, then please do let me know. I'll make sure that you get it, and we'd love to see you either behind the line, serving lunch, or just visiting and encouraging participation in our National School Lunch Program.
That was the one dressed as a pirate.
You'll fit right in if you're dressed as a pirate. The only other announcement is we are finalizing a date and time for the ribbon cutting for the witchcraft playground. That will come up fast, and we hope to confirm that with you within the next day.
Anything else?
Nope. That concludes my comments. Thank you.
No soon representative update.
I can just share, I did meet with the students today. They really cracked me up. They, we didn't have enough, they wanted more students to be there. There was only 10 out of the 16, and they were adamant that we weren't going to do, they weren't going to do their speeches for being selected until more students could be there. So they're, we're meeting next month, next Tuesday again. We did, however, talk a lot about the, about their process for, they want to open it up to more students, and so they drafted questions, they drafted something for me to send out to all students in the district about the purpose of this committee. And then we had a really good conversation about the MCAS as a graduation requirement. We talked about the charter cap issue. They asked a lot of great questions. I think I, they were pretty mesmerized by all those, they had a lot of questions about the purpose of MCAS. It was a really good conversation. I think folks would be really proud of the student leaders there, and they, of course, advocated for things they want to see differently at their, at the school. So they will, hopefully I'll have some news to share at the next meeting about who will be the president, or the chair of the committee who will serve on the school committee.
Subcommittee reports.
Yep.
Member Miranda.
Yeah, I just wanted to state that we had a Buildings and Ground Subcommittee meeting before this school committee meeting, and very brief comment here, we discussed facility rental fees, and we're going to revisit this at our next Subcommittee meeting, so, yeah, we don't have a date yet, but we'll post it, obviously.
I'm just going to give a preview of what we'll be voting on in a minute. In case anybody is unfamiliar with the newcomer policy, which is embedded in our transportation policy, it says multilingual learners who arrive in the United States within the last 12 months shall be eligible for bus transportation with no mileage restrictions for the remainder of the school year that they arrive in Salem Public Schools. So after some consultation with Vanessa, who is really helpful and talented, talking to us about our newcomer families and what their needs are around transportation, we've sort of reassessed this policy, in which all of our ML newcomers are eligible for a bus regardless of distance from the school. And what we found is that our new transportation policies already give our newcomers the transportation opportunities that they need. And so we kind of built those new policies last year, and where we have superintendent's exemption and other opportunities if students, if families feel as though this is going to be difficult on, you know, for attendance or other reasons, they can sort of ask for transportation. And so what we, what we believe is that there needs to be more support on the district's side with, in educating newcomer families right away about what they're entitled to and how to navigate the system that exists. So the way the policy is written right now, we could be adding a stop, and we do add a stop, or depending on the situation, a bus for students within, living within a half a mile or even a quarter mile of school. And this sort of wreaks havoc on our bus routes and on transportation in general. And so, and what Vanessa also communicated to us is that the newcomer policy is a one-year policy. So many parents are sort of caught off guard in year two when they don't, when they're not entitled to those same transportation services. And so again, we, we think that it's going to be better for families to understand their options and what they're entitled to as soon as they arrive, so that that is a system that they are empowered to navigate, and so that families can make more informed decisions going forward. So as a policy Subcommittee, we are not asking to wholesale get rid of the newcomer policy, but we would like to ask you to vote to suspend it for a year, so that we really can assess whether or not our assumptions are true. And, you know, also, you know, really rely on the superintendent to make sure that those who are interfacing with our newcomer families are providing them with this information out of the gate. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that, or if you want to add.
I was just, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was just reaching for Mike to say what you just added at the end, that this is so, so dependent on--
Yep.
--the interactions between the folks at the, both at PIC, but then also at the schools as the time goes on. Because we don't want to take things away that are necessary, we just want to see if we can do a little bit of job at it. But we need the people in the situation where they're interacting with the families to really be on top of this and push it.
And to that point, I think that we, we didn't discuss this during policies, but I think logically we need some review this, during this school year to see how this is going. We need, you know, some feedback maybe in, you know, March or February, March, to let us know sort of where we are, what, what new interface procedures are in place so that we're, we know that we're not unnecessarily harming families when they're, when they're really in need of services.
Any other committee reports? Subcommittee reports? Member Cruz.
I just wanted to handle the committee, the whole report that's listed. The Salem School Committee met last Monday, September 30th, in a committee, the whole meeting, in which we took up several, several items for discussion and had some presentations, one being the collective bargaining agreement. The committee recommended that the vote be ratified at this committee meeting for the successor agreements for the STU and PSRP unit. You'll see that on the agenda later today. And then additionally, we had two other presentations, one on the financial outlook for the district that talked about some of the implications that were tied to the successor agreement, but also some broader conversations around our need to get together to talk about potential financial savings that we would have to achieve in reductions in order to remain solvent as a district. And then we also talked at length about the Salem Academy Charter School Enrollment Expansion Update, which you heard more about today in the superintendent's report. So that's me reporting out on Committee of the Whole.
If there is nothing else, we'll move on to motions and resolutions. We'll take these roll call vote one at a time. Our first item is related to the collective bargaining agreement for the Salem Teachers Union. Is there a motion to ratify the successor contract for three years with the teachers' unit of the Salem Teachers Union?
So--
Second.
Under discussion? Seeing none, I will call roll call vote. Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
And myself. Member Pangallo, yes. Vote to ratify the successor contract for a term of three years with the paraprofessional and school-related personnel unit.
So moved.
Second. Under discussion? Seeing none. Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
And myself. Member Pangallo, yes. Do you want to-- Okay. So the next item is, this is suspension of policy 3601, Section 2C, multilingual learner first-year transportation services. And this is only a suspension, this is not--
So moved.
I'll second.
Under discussion?
Do we need to clarify? I thought we were saying for a year.
It is for one year.
For one year.
Okay.
Do you want to say, is the motion suspended for one year?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. Thanks.
All right. Good call. No discussion. Roll call vote. Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Myself. Member Pangallo, yes.
What about me? My answer is yes.
I have my fancy system here to try to adjust who votes first, and it threw me off. How dare you?
Yeah, but it works, right?
Okay. Any announcements from members? No? No? Good. So I have two things. First, thanks to everybody that participated in the grand parade for the charter haunted happenings. The school groups are great to see. We had the big cheese there. There's a hit. Has the big cheese.
So many cheese jokes.
Yeah, I'm sure. It was a late night, but it was a fun night for the city, for sure. And then just a reminder, voter registration deadline is October 26th. If you are a student and you're going to turn 18 by the election date in November, you still can register to vote, even if you're 17 years old. So please remember to vote. We had folks from my staff up at Salem High School and Salem Academy Charter School registering students. They're very excited to register to vote, and they knew that MCAS was on the ballot, so expecting a high turnout for students this year. Any other announcements?
Okay. I just want to reiterate something I share with the school committee in my weekly notification is that the thought is, instead of student showcases, that we bring school committee, we invite school committee members to visit schools, to see different programs, and actually showcase kids and staff in their, the work that they do every day. So we're going to set up a series of visits to different schools to feature different programs, and hopefully you could attend. I know people's schedules are busy, but even if you can attend a few of them, it would be, you know, much appreciated, and it would give you a chance to see the work in action. Not that this isn't great here, but it's not in the, you know, it's not the real work that happens, and it would give you a chance to see up close and talk to students and talk to staff. So that's our plan for this year, you know, for school committee members to get as close to the action as possible. So stay tuned for a series of visits that we want to schedule in the upcoming months.
On that note, the only question that I would have is, we're going to get a chance to visit Ms. Berman's classroom and play the recorder.
That's where we're going to start, in Ms. Berman's classroom.
Play the drums, the recorder, whatever you want.
I'd like to refresh my skills. I have a toddler who's been asking me about musical instruments, so that'd be great.
Dancing skills.
Pretty good.
And on that note, our final motion of the night.
Yeah, let's get it done.
Motion adjourned.
I'll second.
Under discussion, seeing none. Roll call vote. Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
And myself. Member Pangallo, yes. Adjourned. Thank you, everyone.